By leading the. Thanks, Jim. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I have to be honest, I don't really know where to look because I don't have a flag in my office, but I will just look at the screen and start. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Um, I will start the introductions and we'll try to figure out the best way to go through this. I am Tyler McCloskey. I'm the Chair. And showing next to me on the screen is Wayne.
I'm Wayne Wright, Planning Commission.
And then I see Nick.
Nick Bond, Community Development Director for the City of Port Orchard.
And then I see Connor.
I'm Connor Dawkins, Assistant Planner for the City of Port Orchard.
And then I see Jim.
Jim Fisk, Principal Planner, City of Port Orchard.
Louis.
Louis Taub, Planning Commissioner.
Paul.
Paul Fontenot, Planning Commissioner.
Joe.
Joe Morrison, Planning Commissioner.
And last, we got Stephanie.
Stephanie Bailey, Planning Commissioner.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for joining from the comfort of our homes, except for Nick and Jim. Um, number three on our agenda, we've got audience comments. Do we have anybody in the waiting room? Nope.
Nobody in the lobby nor online.
Okay, well, we will skip on ahead to number four, the approval of our June 4th minutes. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from the June meeting?
I did.
Uh, were there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the June 4th, Planning Commission?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Tyler.
Thank you.
I would have been happy to make the motion, but I can't look at the packet and the video at the same time. So I I don't want to call out, you know, I don't know. Wrong, the wrong date or something.
No worries. Thank you guys. All right. So moving into business items five, uh, A, the discussion of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Draft Elements. And I will hand that over to Jim.
Um, Chairman McCloskey, I'll abstain from the minutes. Um, I wasn't here.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Jeff.
I'm the same way. I wasn't there either.
All right. Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna tackle the comprehensive plan and sub area planning, um, agenda items on tonight's, um, Finding Commission Agenda. And just to recap, um, where we last met on June 4th and um, at that meeting, we provided you with an updated draft of the comprehensive plan. Uh, it was missing the capital facilities element. And, um, at that meeting, we also provided a comment response matrix where the city uh, and its consultants went through all of the Planning Commissioner and public comments. And, um, provided a response indicating how the comment was addressed, uh, or in the case that it wasn't going to be addressed, why? And so, um, most of the, the draft comprehensive plan that is in your packet tonight is not changed. But there have been some minor changes and in this packet, the minor changes were, were shown in red line. So the, uh, the document that is in your packet has a number of red line changes. Um, some of those red line changes relate to the fact that the Office of Financial Management, um, issued their April 1st, 2024 um, population estimates. And so the, the city of Port Orchard grew to 18,300 residents. And those numbers came out at the end of, end of June. And so we updated, uh, that, that throughout the, the comprehensive plan for consistency. We've also, um, received some of the updated graphics we're waiting on from our consultant. So you'll notice that, um, in the introduction and land use chapters, uh, most of the earlier chapters, there's, there's some updated and refreshed graphics that are in the document. And there are still more graphics that are, are yet to be updated. And in some cases, we're, we're still waiting on, uh, you know, the, the transportation element still requires a little bit more work. Um, and we're also waiting for the preferred alternative of the, the sub area plans before we can totally finalize all of our graphics. Um, and then the, the, the big changes that I want to talk about tonight are the capital facilities element. This begins on page 175 of the PDF packet. And, um, the capital facilities element that is before you tonight is totally new. And as a refresher, um, we are required, that's one of the mandatory elements of our comprehensive plan. Our, our previous capital facility element was, was pretty weak in terms of, uh, content and a lot of that just had to do with the, the fact that the system plans that the city had in place back in 2016 were not very good. In some cases, they were fairly out of date. And so we have, we have totally started from scratch with a new capital facilities element. And under the law, we are required to have an inventory of our existing facilities. We have to have a forecast of future needs for facilities. Um, we have to have a six year plan for financing facilities. And so you'll see that for each category, whether it be the administration, water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, uh, those all have now six year capital, um, improvement programs where we're spelling out which projects we're intending to build when. Um, these CIPs, um, will be reviewed by the City Council in conjunction with the budget that gets adopted later this year. And so the, some of the projects may shift depending on what the council ultimately is able to put in the budget. But this is what we're putting forward, uh, as a recommendation from the, uh, the department heads and I, you know, the consultant who's helping us with this element met with each department to really try to identify existing conditions, concerns, needs. And then worked with the mayor and the department heads to, to put together the programming for the six year CIP. And so, um, uh, if, if there are questions about the CIP, uh, I'm happy to take those at this time. And, um, once we're done talking about the, the comp plan, I want to talk a little bit more about the sub area plan. And, um, so I'll, I'll throw it back at the Planning Commission for some discussion. Did, did anyone have any questions about the materials uh, provided to you tonight or, uh, my explanation that I've given?
Didn't have any questions. I did have, so when we were going through this piece by piece, I was a little worried that when we got the final product, it was going to be a little disjointed. And seeing it all together as one document, one plan, that's not the case at all. It, it, it transitions well, it flows well. Uh, I think each section builds upon the previous one. Uh, it came together very nicely. Structure wise.
Would it be helpful at all to walk through some of the capital projects that have been included? I can kind of give you an explanation of, of some of the things that are on the list or, um, is, is that too in the weeds for you tonight?
I think I personally wouldn't mind, uh, going through that. I don't know about the, the rest of the commissioners. Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
All right. Well, I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, share my screen here and Jim, I don't know if I have permission to do that right now. Looks like I do. Um, so I'm going to start, um, with the, and is this a large enough font that everybody can mostly see, um? See what you're looking at here?
Yes.
All right. So the, the document is broken into a variety of categories. Once you get through the introductory portions. We have, um, portions on public safety. Um, uh, there's talk of, uh, services provided by outside agencies, including Westside Utility District, the school district, um, and other, other entities. Um, but we go through each of those categories, talking about the existing facilities. And then you'll see a table like this where we have a funding source table and an expenditures table. And in these cases, these are the projects that are currently in our six year capital funding program. And this does not include operations funding. So if it's a project that is replacing existing infrastructure, that is not required to be in the capital facility element. These are really new, large uh, projects. And so one of the first ones you see here under our, um, facilities category is the city hall renovations that are currently underway, which, um, we, we expect to have about a million more in expenditures that carry into 2025 in the budget. And this will get trued up as we go through the budget process. The consultant is recommending that we do a couple of, um, planning and facility studies. So there's a facility condition assessment, a citywide facilities plan and a downtown government campus master plan project. And the idea here is that we really need to look at our existing facilities. We've grown a lot. We need to come up with a, a citywide facilities plan. And then specific to downtown, we own a lot of properties and we're, we're somewhat decentralized with a couple of different buildings that we own. Um, the DCD is split between two different buildings. Um, we've just acquired this property at 730 Prospect. And so you see a $2 million expenditure in 2024. Uh, we are showing the need to put about $500,000 into that building, uh, in, in the not too distant future. And so, um, the, um, that we're really, we're really focusing with facilities on planning for the future and the fact that we need to do more detailed study before we spend a whole lot of money. There's also a line item here for a downtown parking study. And, um, we're, we're talking about whether the council wants to program money, but there's an idea of building a shared parking facility downtown. In order for the city council to spend money on it, it would have to be in our, our capital facilities element. When you scroll down to, um, the public safety, uh, and facilities, um, we have identified a number of, um, a number of different projects. We have some upgrades at our public workshop out at the industrial park. There is a new proposed public works annex. And so the city owns, I think, 40 or 50 acres near the old city dump in the industrial park. And we are looking at building a storage yard and like a, a pole building where we can store materials and, and other supplies that are protected from the weather because we have uh, outgrown our existing shop and yard, which does not have room to expand. Um, we have a stormwater decant facility and this is where, when we run the street sweeper, we have, uh, uh, debris and trash and sediment and other things that get sucked up by the street sweeper. And we have to allow that material to be emptied, to settle out, to let the water evaporate. And then we scoop up the solids and take them away for appropriate disposal. And what we found is that the facility that we built just five or six years ago is, is far too small, uh, for what we are, are needing. And so we're looking at having to upgrade that facility in the coming years. There's also, um, an identified project for an east, um, public works operational station. So someplace east of Blackjack Creek. As well as, um, we have a building, it's an old fire station on Sydney Avenue, um, near, uh, Paul Powers Park, which also, um, we're looking to improve and put that to use. Right now it's just storage, but it has the, um, the potential for some expansion and, and better utilization of that facility. Moving to utilities and transportation, I'm not going to get into, um, the uh, public works, or I'm sorry, the transportation projects and pardon me, the lights in the new city hall just turned off on me. I, I think they are motion activated and I hadn't been moving enough. So, um, I'm not going to touch on the transportation projects right now because we're still waiting for the transportation element. But most of the projects that are on this list are already grant funded. And so we have, uh, more projects than uh, we can handle already. And I don't expect additions to this within the, the six year planning period. Um, but it still could change and, and maybe see one or, one or two additions, uh, or possibly subtractions. In stormwater, um, there's a Johnson Creek estuary project that, um, Wash Dot has actually received a grant to restore the estuary at the bottom of Port Orchard Boulevard. And so this is a project that we are partnering with them, uh, on where we're going to couple a roundabout project, a culvert replacement project and an estuary project altogether as one. Uh, and so you see that funded here. The Sydney Regional Stormwater Project, there's, we bought a, um, 30 acre piece of property at the south end of Sherman Avenue near Blackjack Creek. And so that was purchased with both park and stormwater money. And the idea is that we're going to build a regional facility for stormwater so that we can start building out the sidewalk network in that area of the city where there are not many sidewalks today. Trying to improve walkability. And then the remnants of that, that property can also be used to make some park improvements. And we are just now kicking off a park planning exercise. Um, there's a Sydney Road Southwest Culvert Project. Um, this is in the Ruby Creek neighborhood where we have a fish barrier that we are looking to, uh, to repair. Uh, and then that would include, uh, putting the road back over the top of it with, as a complete street. Right now it doesn't have sidewalks across that culvert because the culvert was a little bit, uh, it wasn't quite wide enough, I think. There's a Sedgwick Balancing Culvert Project where we have, uh, one of our roads, uh, out just between Stetson Heights and the, uh, the Safeway in the Ruby Creek area. Um, the, the road actually impounds water and doesn't allow water to flow from one side of the road to the other, where that road crosses some wetlands. So there's a culvert replacement project there. The Annapolis Creek Culvert is a, um, a top priority in our stormwater plan that's, um, out towards Annapolis. Um, and is right, uh, just next to the storage units that are out there. There's an old, uh, culvert that is, is at the end of its life and it also prevent, present some, uh, flooding and, uh, fish passage concerns. And so we are looking to make a major improvement there. We did a, a 60% design a couple of years ago and have been, um, looking to pursue grants to build that. And so um, we're hopeful that we can take that to 100% design in the coming years and also find funding to, uh, to build that project. And then finally, um, one of our other top priorities in our stormwater plan is doing some downtown stormwater retrofits because a lot of the water flowing out of downtown is untreated going into Sinclair inlet. And so this would be like bio filtration swales or cartridge systems or other, uh, improvements that would improve water quality, uh, in terms of what's actually getting into Sinclair inlet. On the sewer side, um, the Marina Lift, Lift Station, that's the big hole in the ground next to Kitsap Bank. That is well underway at this point in time. Um, there's also a Bay Street Lift Station project down near the Ford dealership that has to be done. And we have a loan, uh, a loan or a grant, I can't remember which to do, uh, that project next year. There are, um, some lift station and controls and generator improvements that are needed. Um, the Johnson Creek Sewer Lift Station, uh, so with this estuary restoration at the bottom of Johnson Creek, a lot of sewage flows across that culvert. And when they take out that culvert, um, our, our sewer line right now goes right through the middle of the culvert. And uh, as a result, when you replace it with a, a box culvert, we're going to have to actually pump sewage across, uh, the estuary. And so um, Wash Dot has informed us that there is part of their road project, we're going to have to make improvements to our lift station. And then, um, there's a, a third Marina or a third McCormick Lift Station that is in our comprehensive plan that is likely to be built in 2026. And then finally, um, we are designing the, uh, Sydney South Lift Station. This is the one that serves the south end of the Ruby Creek neighborhood and will be the big regional facility that handles all of the future growth within that basin. Uh, for water improvements, we have the, um, we have a well 13 project that's over by Fred Meyer. Well 12 is, uh, at, uh, just west of McCormick Woods. Well 11 is right near the golf course clubhouse in McCormick Woods and is currently under construction. There's a, uh, a Melcher Booster Pump rebuild project that's underway. There's the well seven, uh, basin. We're going to be currently, there's some hardware at city hall for well seven where we pump water from that well over to city hall for treatment. We want to move all of the treatment facilities to the wellhead, uh, and get them off of the city hall property. And then, um, there's a well seven rehabilitation. There's a couple of booster pumps, a couple of transmission mains as we look to tie the McCormick Water System together with the city system. Um, and that's pending the outcome of our, uh, our, our foster water rights project, uh, with well 12 and well 13. And then moving on to parks, um, we have a, a, quite a few projects. The, um, the Port Orchard Community Event Center is, is really these first three projects are all right downtown near the existing Kitsap Bank site. And they're all one project, but they're identified separately in our parks plan. We've also, um, we have a grant and, and we're going to be going out to bid in the next month or two for the Givens Park Sport Court remodel project. That's the, uh, the tennis courts and the basketball court will be made multi-sport and, uh, we'll be making some ADA accessibility improvements and other improvements at that park. Um, McCormick Village Park Phase Three, this is the big regional park with the splash pad out at McCormick, near McCormick Woods. There is a, um, a west entrance to that park that still has to be completed. The developer is actually going to be building that for us. Um, and they receive an impact fee credit uh, in exchange for the improvements they make. There's also some multimodal pathways that are being dedicated as public in the McCormick West area that create a loop and quite the paved trail network that, that anyone from the city will be able to use. Um, I mentioned already the Sherman Avenue Stormwater Park. So we have both stormwater money programmed as well as parks money to improve that site. Um, we need to do a, a Paul Powers Master Plan for the Paul Powers Park. And as we expand the, the storage shed and the public works facility at that park, we may displace the existing playground. And so what we're going to do is look at planning a new playground in other areas of that site, uh, and try to make it just a better park overall, along with public works facilities that would be there and would have staff there, which, um, is likely to improve the security at that park because currently it's, it's kind of a tucked away park that, um, people don't feel comfortable going to because, uh, uh, sometimes there's some unsavory characters that, that hang out there. Um, finally, we're looking at doing master plans for both the Givens Park. Um, we've had some issues with the Little League and the, um, one of the baseball fields up there. Um, there's all kinds of accessibility issues, parking issues, stormwater drainage issues there. And so we really want to, to engage the community and really look at sort of, uh, you know, improving that park for the next hundred years. Um, and, and that could include, you know, looking at all weather playing surfaces rather than grass on one or both of the fields. Uh, so that you would get more use out of that facility. And then the root, the Ruby Creek Regional Park, um, this is near the park and ride that Kitsap Transit is going to be building. And so they have, uh, they're going to be dedicating some land to the city for some habitat restoration. And there's an opportunity to do some trails and potentially, uh, a small, uh, park, more active use park, um, there on the floodplains near Blackjack Creek that would, uh, allow the public to enjoy that area and get, uh, enjoy the, the natural amenities there. And so that takes us to the end of the capital facilities element. And so, um, obviously this is totally new and we wanted to get it before you and kind of walk you through it so that you would, um, feel you feel comfortable reviewing it over the coming weeks and giving us, uh, any feedback that you have on the, the, uh, the element. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions and then, then we're going to move on to the sub area plans.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I should have a quick question rolling back to the, uh, the capital facilities element that we just went through a little bit. Uh, you mentioned the Johnson Creek, Cre- Johnson Creek Estuary Restoration Project. And that it involved not only, uh, some environmental, some culvert work, but also a roundabout as well. Um, uh, is that correct? Is that, am I understanding?
Yeah, the, the idea is that, um, they're going to design the culvert replacement in conjunction with a roundabout so that the, the future roadway has the right amount of chicane going into a roundabout and it'll make turning movements at that intersection easier. And also vehicles that are stacking up coming in from the shipyard at 4:00 PM. Uh, you, you're not, you don't pull into the roundabout until it's clear to proceed through. And so it'll, it'll keep the ability for people to turn left and go up Port Orchard Boulevard. Um, and then the, the, there's four buildings there on the north or south side of Bay Street that are in a depression. And so the culvert actually runs underneath all of those buildings. So Wash Dot has a grant to purchase some, some buildings, tear down structures and do a estuary so that the tides can come in and out through the new culvert and, uh, and fill up that estuary that was historically present, but which has been uh, eliminated through, through the, the culverts that were installed years ago.
So it's sort of like the, the projects are going to be intertwined. They're going to work off of one another. Uh, so as a result, they thought it was, it was, it's good idea to sort of bundle them into one project and sort of one funding. Is that, that?
Yeah, well, it's several different sources of funding, but we, we got the money for the estuary restoration and then Wash Dot has the court injunction for the culvert replacement. Wash Dot has told us that, that with this being a state highway, that we're going to need to move our sewer lift station. And so we're, we're still negotiating over that because we think we actually, um, don't, uh, it, it may be Wash Dot that has to pay for the sewer station to be moved or to be installed. And then the, uh, the roundabout, we just applied a couple of weeks ago for a grant for transportation funds to build that. And we think it's going to score very well because it, it ties so many different projects together. Um, we, we expect that it's kind of a slam dunk project. And so hopefully we'll hear soon that we have the funding for the roundabout. And that all of these things can move forward together as one project.
And just the one more thing, based on that, um, you mentioned as well, the Annapolis Creek Culvert Project, which, uh, you said was going to be around the, the self storages out there uh, on Bay Street going toward Annapolis. Uh, with that, there's also the, the project of, uh, the, let's see, the Bay Street pedestrian pathway segments. Uh, that are also going to be worked. I'm, I'm, it's my understanding that's going to go along the, the coast, uh, around Annapolis. So my, my, I guess my question is why were the, the projects, uh, with Johnson Creek bundled together and sort of one singular project? Whereas the culvert in Annapolis naturally would, they would affect one another, right? With the Bay Street pedestrian pathway and the culvert.
Yeah, and we're, we're still working on final design on the pathway is my understanding. I'm not directly involved in that project, but um, we don't have grant funding for Annapolis Creek at this time. So we're, we're planning on pursuing grant funding. We also adopted the stormwater capital facility charge, um, that took effect on June 1st of this year. And so we're now collecting fees from developers to help pay for some of the capital improvements to our stormwater system. And so we do have some local dollars that can be put towards that project, although whether enough money has come in to actually fully fund Annapolis Creek versus, um, still needing grant is, is sort of yet to be determined.
Appreciate that explanation.
Missioner Wright.
Yeah, mute myself here. Thanks, Nick. Appreciate that. The, um, one question I came that didn't come into my comments that I sent to Jim earlier. Now that I listened to you, one comment you're probably going to get from the general public is how much is already paid for or grant awarded and how much is not? One thing that you, the, we, we might want to consider is putting an asterisk on stuff that is not actually funded yet. And we're hopeful for, I don't know if there's a way to put that into those tables so that the public sees that this is what we want to do. But it's not funded yet because one of the questions I had was where is all this money going to come from? And I know there's multiple sources. I've been there, done that. But I just wanted to think about it from the public's perspective.
Yeah. So the, there's an unfunded column. So there's a funding table followed by an expenditure table and they balance. But where it says unfunded, these are funds that we still need to identify a source for. So.
All the rest of it is funded then?
All the rest of it is either, you know, there, if it says city, we've already appropriated funds for the project. In some cases, the impact fee credit, this means that a developer is receiving a credit and the developer is actually building it. The park impact fee is future appropriation of park impact fee dollars. Grants, we have a, a, a very large grant to build the community event center. Unsecured grant means we have, um, we, we're in the process of, of getting a grant with it's, it's a known grant, but it's not fully locked down. And then unfunded is sort of the delta that still need, we still need to come up with. So.
You want to think about putting a couple of sentences in the paragraph preceding that, just explaining that a little bit more. I could just see, uh, some of the public having some questions about that.
Sure.
But I thought this section is one of the more well-written sections, by the way. I, I liked it a lot.
Good. I'm glad. I mean, this chapter definitely needed work and, um, this is a huge improvement over what we had. And, and keep in mind that, um, the council is going to review this at their September work study and they're going to be starting their budget process. And so this is really within the council's wheelhouse as the, the group that, you know, appropriates funds to these various projects. And so, um, you know, the Planning Commission is making a recommendation, but the council could totally scrap this and rewrite it.
That's why they're elected and we're not.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to move on, um, to the sub area plans and just update you on where we're at, uh, with our sub area planning process. So, um, part of the reason we haven't had a Planning Commission meeting since early June is we've been busy, um, conducting public outreach and really planning the workshop that we held on July 24th. And, um, trying to, uh, hone in on a preferred alternative for the sub area plan. So, um, we did have excellent turnout at the July 24th, um, open house that we held at the, the Port Orchard Library down on the waterfront. Of course, city hall is under construction and we had to find an alternate meeting room. And, um, our, our former, uh, Planning Commissioner, Kathleen Wilson helped us out there by, uh, by staying open late just for us so that we could conduct some outreach. Um, we did have some very interested people show up and some very vocal people. And so we had a lot of, um, I'd say we had a lot of questions and answer come up during our presentation and it was a little bit of a slog to get through the presentation. Because people had very strong opinions about transportation and the need for road improvements in the Bethel Corridor. Um, we, uh, we had kind of a walk around open house, but because of the question and answer, it was not uh, open as long as we had hoped. And the library kicked us out at 8:00 PM. So we didn't, we didn't get as much time talking to people at the easels as we had hoped, although we had a solid 20 or so minutes, I think. Uh, and, and had some really good comments and really good conversations with folks. And then the public engagement that was provided in person, we held that online as well through our social pinpoint platform. And so for two weeks after the open house, people were invited to provide their comments online. And we did have, um, a decent number of comments. Uh, I would say we had as many comments on the, the sub area plans as we've had on the overall comprehensive plan as a whole. And we probably had more attendees show up for that workshop than we've had show up for, uh, any of our comprehensive plan events thus far. And we probably had more attendees show up for that workshop than we've had show up for uh any of our comprehensive plan events thus far. Um where we're at right now, um oh, and I I also wanted to mention that the public engagement summary was provided to the planning commission. Uh it went out in an email separate from the packet just because we didn't have it at the time the packet went out. We were still working to to finalize that. At the end of last week, so that should be in your inbox and I would encourage you to review it uh as you're preparing for our upcoming uh planning commission meetings. So where we're at on each of the subarea plans, um the Bethel Lund area. Um we definitely had a stronger opinion from the public of not changing things and going more with an alternate one scenario. If you remember, each of the subarea plans had three alternatives that we were looking at. There was the no change. There was the. Um uh small changes and then there was a a mixed use, high higher intensity alternative. And so for Bethel Lund, the um the preferred alternative that we are still refining and working to get to you at your September meeting. Is a a kind of a hybrid between the no change alternative with some minor height increases proposed. And what we're considering doing is having a height overlay district for both subareas. Where we're in areas away from some some of the neighborhoods where people seem to have a lot of concerns. We're looking at allowing some additional height, but no major zoning changes. Um. So that um that that preferred alternative will be released in the next couple of weeks and we'll get that to you in time for your September. Uh planning commission meeting. And then the Bethel Sedgwick um subarea, we did actually hear more. Uh that more people were interested in seeing uh a little bit more development and um. So we're we're working with alternative two and we're adding some height. We're using the overlay approach. Uh and so it's kind of a hybrid between alternative two with a little bit of alternative three, but it's mostly the alternative two um alternative. And um those are what you will see developed here in in just a couple of weeks. And our goal is to have a um. The planning commission is going to be, we're going to give a presentation of the preferred alternatives in a public meeting. We're going to invite everybody who came to the workshop to the planning commission meeting to see the unveiling of the uh preferred alternatives. The planning commission will have a chance to to uh ask questions and um and then. Based on any feedback that we hear from the public at that meeting, we will uh finalize the the subarea plans. And and get them into the draft plan for the public hearing, which we are now planning for October. So any questions on the subarea plans? Commissioner Wright.
Who? Do we have a consultant working with you on those or are you doing?
We do, we do. So our our consulting team is working on both of the subarea plans. And um they put together all the materials for the workshop and uh gave the presentations.
And that's Makers and H B L together or one or the other?
Uh also, um uh our economic consultant, um Leland Consulting Group is is on the team as well.
Thanks.
And so they're just, um we just sent them the the today they received the preferred alternative zoning map that Jim and I. Sort of um we we took, we took the. The two alternatives and kind of meshed them together for each of the subareas, sent it to the consultant and they're going to crunch the numbers and sort of finalize what that. Preferred alternative looks like and uh we'll have something back here hopefully at the end of the week in time to get it into your packet. Uh in just uh about ten days from now.
The other question I had, Nick, was and maybe for you too, Jim. Is the intention for the comprehensive plan to include these, all these uh subarea plants as part of it?
Yes, and the reason for that is that we are trying to seek um funding to help build the Bethel Road improvements. And when you do, if if we can get these recognized as a center through the regional funding organization. We will score better in our grant applications. Our previous grant applications for Bethel did not score well. And so to be recognized as a countywide center, you have to prepare a subarea plan and it has to be adopted by. Uh the end of the year in order for us to get credit for being a center in the next funding cycle. So there is some urgency to get this done. Um and the the strange thing about it is that. We're required to plant, do a subarea plan, but we're not actually changing that much about the neighborhoods. They already had this zoning in place. But they really want you to do the public outreach process and really make sure that you have a plan that's tailored to the neighborhood. And takes into consideration the need for other facilities like parks and uh trails and and transportation improvements. So so we're going through the motions of of preparing the plan so that we can be recognized as a center and then hopefully get additional funding to pay for Bethel.
Yeah, one of the reasons I asked is I went through the whole document last two or three days and there's. A style difference between all the different pieces, even the chapters. One of the comments that I sent to Jim earlier was. We should probably think about getting a technical editor to go from the very cover all the way to the end and make sure it all kind of looks the same. The figures and tables are captioned and numbered the same. So I just why I was just curious, so is it? The the subarea plans might be okay looking differently, but they look better than the rest of the document, in my opinion. So that's why.
Yes, so just just so you're aware, the um. Makers is the lead on the subarea plan, so they're the consultant preparing that document. And it is something that will be in the appendix of the comp plan. It's not part of the comp plan itself. Um we we would have had to spend additional money to reformat the original comp plan document from the previous version. And so we just chose to edit what we had rather than totally reformatting it. And so we want the entire comp plan chapters one through ten to be consistent with one another. And then at the end of the comp plan, there's an appendix B that is a documents adopted by reference and it will list all of the reference documents. And then this subarea, the two subarea plans will be on that list as separate documents that are adopted by reference.
Okay, I sent Jim a a document today. I marked it up where I found all the inconsistencies and. Things that you might want to consider, so it might help, might speed it up a little bit.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about the subarea plans? All right, so finally, I I just want to wrap up the comp plan discussion by just talking about our schedule and where we go from here and you may want a. Uh a pen and paper handy for this. Um our, we are having a September third planning commission meeting. Um Jim and I are going to be attending remote and the council chambers will not be done at that time. Um we are going to present you the preferred alternative and it's not going to be the full the full plan, but it will be some elements of the preferred alternative. Including the zoning map and the height overlay map uh and possibly more, but we have to see how far we get in the next ten days. And so that's something we're inviting the public to. We're going to share with the public and we may have some decent online attendance. In September, we have to get our CIPA decision, our Department of Commerce notice and our P S R C notice out, so that's something that we'll do internally. And um with the commerce notice, it's a sixty day notice, so we can't adopt. Until sixty days after we file the uh notice of intent to adopt uh with commerce. And so if we do it in September, that sets us up for the city council to take action in November or December. October first is our normal planning commission meeting in October. And we intend to begin the public hearing on the comprehensive plan and subarea plan at that time. And so it will be advertised as a public hearing. If the planning commission feels comfortable with the state of things, at the end of that meeting, you could choose to recommend approval of the. Comprehensive plan, or you could ask for additional corrections. If you had asked for additional corrections, we are planning a special meeting on October twenty ninth. We have a fifth Tuesday in October. Uh which means that the council chambers would be available at that time. And um we that would be the meeting where we hope to present any final edits to you and then get the recommendation to approve. Our hope is to get the the recommendation to the city council to their November twentieth work study meeting. They do a a work study uh session on the third uh Tuesday of the month. And so um it's really critical that planning commission wrap all of this up at the end of October. Um because we are running out of uh runway here on on meeting our December thirty first adoption deadline. And so if if the city council studies this on November twentieth, they could potentially adopt on November twenty sixth. December tenth or December seventeenth, depending on how many meetings they need to go through and potentially add additional edits or. Uh request additional information. And so um the uh October one and October twenty nine are uh critical dates to to mark on your calendar. Because we do need a quorum in order to be able to hold those meetings and hold public hearings. Commissioner Wright.
You know, I'm going to ask you questions, man. So I I I I've been here, done that in other cities. Is there a way in Port Orchard policy procedures, protocols to kind of start giving the council a sneak peek of what some of this stuff is?
Yeah, we we're going to walk them through the entire comp plan. Um at their September work study meeting and it's in whatever form we have, we're going to give them the latest and greatest. But it will not be the planning commission recommendation because you will not have uh. We we may not have everything totally done by by that September meeting. I will say that the individual elements were brought to the land use committee one by one, so the land use committee has seen all of the elements. Except for the capital facilities element. Um unless I'm wrong, Jim, did we, did they see that or no?
They saw the initial draft.
Okay, so they they saw an earlier draft, but not the most recent. So um so at least some on the council have been in the loop as we've been going through this process. And of course, um council member Deener is a planner for for Kitsap County, so he's more familiar than than most with this process. Um but um the 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 full council will get their first presentation of the comp plan uh in quite some time. Uh at their September work study meeting and then we can also add it to the October work study meeting, but we're also competing with budget for. Uh time and so um I I want to make sure that our finance department has also. Uh the opportunity that they need to present the budget to the council and uh move that through the process in tandem with the comprehensive plan.
And could you tell us who's on their land use committee?
I believe it is Scott Deener, uh Jay Rosa Pepe and is it Fred Chang, Jim?
Eric Warden.
Oh, Eric Warden, not Fred Chang.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about our schedule or uh where we go from here?
I think I might just interject. Um I've heard I've heard around the horn from some jurisdictions that they might be taking longer. Uh than anticipated, so I wanted to say congratulations to the process that Nick and Jim uh. Are running. Connor, good job too. Um this is, this is like a really heavy. Exhausting lift. You guys are on track. Way to go.
Well, hope hopefully we are on track. We we feel like we can get it done, but things are are tightening uh every day. And the just just so everyone is aware, the implications of not adopting by the end of the year. We will be non-compliant with G M A if we do not adopt a periodic update by the end of the year. And that impacts our ability to apply for grants and so any grants that come through the Department of Commerce, that come through P S R C. Um we we will be uh. We will be out of compliance and ineligible to apply for funding for a period of time until we get this work done. And so it is really important that we um keep the process moving and uh make sure that we do not miss those opportunities.
I got another question then. Cause I thought that same thing through, Nick, and one of the suggestions I made earlier. And I want to make it again, even though it wasn't acted on. The climate change element is not required right now, as I understand it. We're putting it in there because of other reasons, but I know three or four of the council members are going to have problems with that. So I'm just, I'm just bringing it out loud. It might behoove us to pull that out and hold it in our back pocket. It's ready to go. We could put it in there as an amendment. But if you want to get quicker approval, at least from three or four of the council members. That's something you might want to think about pulling out, because that's going to get a lot of comments from at least two of them, not three of them.
Yeah, well, so one of the challenges is that there are climate policies, even though the element isn't required now. There are certain policies that have to be in our comprehensive plan and so we would have to move them to other parts of the plan. To to meet P S R C's checklist criteria.
You talk about it in stormwater and you talk about it in natural systems already, so it's in there a few other places. And I looked at the 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 basics. I think the basics may closely be there. But the details that 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 one chapter goes into is going to raise eyebrows. It's going to be your biggest sticking point with the council.
Yeah, well, we'll we'll cross that bridge when the time comes. I think that um. I I think that it's a good foundation for what we're required to have in five years and um there's going to be a lot of very specific guidance that comes out. Um but you know, in September, if the council, when they review this, um if it it seems like there's a majority, we'll we'll look at uh responding.
Yeah, just just bringing it up, because I said I read it and I I'm thinking from them, their perspective and my knowledge of them, at least a few of them. So.
Nick, did you have anything else on the um comp plan?
No, unless uh Jim, did I miss anything that uh you feel the need to supplement?
We will move on to five B, the director's report, which is still you, Nick.
Well, I'm going to have to think of something to report on because I I didn't have anything uh planned for tonight. Um.
I think you could introduce Connor Dolquest.
Oh, is this, this is Connor's first meeting, that's right. So uh yeah, I should I should take a minute. Connor was actually here last summer. He did an internship for the city while he was still going through his masters planning. Uh masters program at the University of Utah and Connor grew up in uh. In rural Idaho and went to the University of Idaho and is uh has a background in architecture from his undergraduate degree. And uh got his masters in urban planning and uh after his internship in Port Orchard last summer. He did work for the city of Park City this past fall and uh. He's a, he's a big skier and uh. Anything else, Connor? You want to wave? I I don't see everybody's face right now, so.
Well, you read my biography. That was really good, so.
All right, well, we're excited to have Connor here and uh he brings a a very nice skill set. And uh is helping us with all of our graphical needs because of his architecture background. So we're uh we're putting together a grant application for uh for one of our parks uh that is due this Thursday. And I've got Connor uh making all kinds of renderings for me to help help our presentation score well.
So I got another question then, Nick, sorry. Where's Sean? Usually he's been around. Is he no longer on the city staff? I mean, give us an update on the staff.
Oh, Sean Sean is uh at a wedding in Toronto this week, so.
Good.
He's just traveling.
Good, I was worried.
Hey, on that note, well, welcome back Connor. And does anybody else have anything before we wrap it up? All right, we can go ahead and adjourn and we will see everybody back in uh about ten days. We've got a couple of weeks.
See you in two weeks.
Night, everybody.
Take care. Bye.